Well, I mean, no, we didn't want to do that until the property was acquired.
I thought that was put on there at your request. This was going to go over the previous sessions that we had, right?
And then everybody recommended internally that maybe we should wait until the property was acquired. So, okay.
Okay, moving on to number two. Just quick. Yeah, you want to announce that?
Do we know that the date is ... what is the date? The date for the K-1 presentation? In July, to allow time for closing.
All right. Then item two is the presentation of plans for the transit hub in the alley project. Mr. Christian Poythie and Mr. Richard Johnson, let's watch.
Yes, sir. And while Christian's getting set up and if we could get the PowerPoint put on the screen, I do have one little bit of K-1 business that y'all may want to at least think about. Lisa is aware as well as the mayor. Y'all made a request to get an RFP out for inspection, assessment, and reporting of the envelope. We've, purchasing manager, we've got all that put together. We've at least identified three different firms that can do that work. We're asking for them to get a proposal back to us. We have it scheduled that we will open those proposals on the 12 noon on July 8th. And if we don't want to wait two weeks for you guys to consider recommendation of which firm based upon qualifications and price and time that they can deliver, I'd love to recommend that we have a resolution as a placeholder with a fill-in-the-blank for the name of the firm and a not-to-exceed fill-in-the-blank. So at least y'all can consider it on the 8th and we can cut them loose and get it done. One of the proposal requirements is we want them to tell us how fast upon issuance of a contract they can produce the reports. And we did say that part of the deliverables is that they would make a presentation not only in written form but of verbal form to you in a work session or a special call to work session so you could ask questions and get the full assessment of the property.
So we have a meeting on the 8th and you would like, I think that we can do that.
All right. Thank you for that and I'm going to turn it over to Christian to kind of give you an update on the alley project.
Yes, so over the last three or four months, we've been working on the Fairhope Alley or what's been dubbed as the Arts Alley. And I'm just going to take you through this process. If you just take a look at the screen, we've been working with a steering committee of about 12 to 15 stakeholders, all pretty much city employees and merchants downtown. So they've been heavily involved in this planning process. Looking at the site and the context of where this is, you all know the public parking garage downtown, really in the core, you know, heart of the downtown and been underutilized and kind of overlooked for the last few years as an asset for the downtown. This graphic just shows you within the core of the downtown, the walkability from the project site, within a five-minute walk, you can be to the edge of downtown on the east over Portico or to the west by Noel Park and 10 minutes to the bay. So that just kind of shows you this is right in the middle of the core of Fairhope. We noted several things early on in the analysis of the site, from circulation issues to stormwater issues and really some, you know, back-of-house types of things that we wanted to still make the alley function as an alley for the services of businesses, but also make it a destination and a recirculation element in the downtown. From a planning standpoint, when we look at public spaces, it's always good to have a mixture of uses surrounding a site like this. We have restaurants, we have the Hampton Inn, we have, you know, pretty much a presence of activity 24/7 in and around that site. Good access from Section Street and Church Street, so that's a good thing, even though there are some circulation challenges that we need to figure out. There are eyes on the larger space with the Hampton Inn. When we say eyes on the space, that's a perception of security, meaning, you know, a pedestrian would rather walk in an area where there's not a plank wall, just because psychologically it feels like, you know, there's people nearby that are, you know, this is not a dead area. So that's a good thing. From the top of the parking garage, there are some pretty cool views if you hadn't been up there and hung out for a few minutes like I did that day. It was a pretty day. You know, there are some parking issues outside of the parking garage that make it somewhat haphazard back there from an organizational standpoint. You do have large trucks loading and unloading back there. So thinking through again how that functions for the merchants and working through some of these parking challenges. It is, like I said, a back-of-house area and we want to try to dress that up as much as possible within reason. Just, this is a good contrasting image of the architecture of the parking garage compared to the fencing and the types of things that are back there in that alley, just a really, you know, large brutalist structure against some fences that probably need to be repaired. So this just shows you some of the, again, really all the issues that are back there from circulation to parking and how we're trying to remedy that. Stormwater is a major concern back there. A lot of pipes dumping out onto the surface of the asphalt and creating potholes and issues for the merchants back there. Just, you know, that's an ongoing issue right now. We just identified this image, this is a Google Earth shot, just to kind of give you a little perspective of the perception of downtown ends essentially at the mural. People kind of, they get to the edge of the mural and then they lose interest. And we feel like the goal of this project is to help recirculate people back into the downtown through the alleyway and see that has a lot of potential there. So our main takeaways, parking and circulation need to be better organized, improve the overall aesthetic, make it appealing for pedestrians, function for transit. That's why we're here. The Bratz Transit Hub is to be located here. Improve stormwater and then make it an asset for adjacent properties. This is just, you know, some of the concerns, again, parking, back-of-house stuff, trash receptacles, making sure everything's code compliance. Richard has volunteered to help some of the ongoing issues with the merchants with more frequent cardboard pickup so that eliminates the need for, you know, a lot of dumpsters. There's currently 25 dumpsters back there, you know, small-scale dumpsters and then larger dumpsters that take up a lot of land and function back there. So working through some of those logistical issues is the thing we've been talking about. Organizing Bratz communication with how the site is to be used, how that fits into their bigger picture, and all these things I've been mentioning were some of the takeaways. From a programming standpoint, art was a big thing, murals, green infrastructure, urban landscape environment. Probably the thing that came out of it that we weren't really expecting is the need for a public restroom on this side of town. And so that was brought to the forefront of the discussion through the design process. And then again, just creating an active, well-lit, vibrant community space back there. So we looked through, you know, several designs and kind of where I drew some inspirations from other projects and movies and just, that's my weird process of how I think through ideas, but this is Portobello Road is in the movie Bedlam and Broomsticks. And so that was sort of my inspiration for one of the schemes that we went through and just how buildings interface with really narrow streets and create a vibrant atmosphere. And so the concept of this scheme is not necessarily looking at the back of these buildings as, you know, the back doors, but potentially front doors that could, you know, give the people that own property on that alley an opportunity to redevelop their backside of their building. Just working through some of these examples. These aren't the finished schemes, so I'll just kind of breeze through, but looking at circulation, where the transit hub is located, and this one is on the west end and then the public restroom on the east end. There were some, you know, concerns brought up by this, by the public restroom being on that end. String lights across the alley, just some, making the area well-lit and vibrant was a goal in this one.
Where was that public restroom?
Again, this is not the final scheme, so I'm just going through some of the iterations of the designs so you can see kind of how we evolved on the final scheme. But it was behind Master Joe's in that large parking area.
I know you may not be there now, but it's only 50 feet from the visitor center of the restroom.
Right. And that was one of the points is just the context of it on that side. So again, these are not the final plans, I'm just walking you through our process. So that's what it looks like now, this is what, you know, the vision was with that scheme, the different building interface and green swell on the edge and some reorganization of the pavement types.
So let me, let's go back to that, Richard, a part of that one. Do we have a proper width? If you could get everybody to buy into it, to put that sidewalk on the right and then also have that on, I mean, I think, is there room for that?
Yeah, yeah. Got it. I mean, if you change the circulation to one way, which is what we're proposing, you have about 18 to 19 feet most of the way down there. So, but this just shows you, I mean, this, again, this isn't the final scheme, but it shows you what that could look like if people see opportunities in redeveloping their properties to make this a corridor in downtown from a retail perspective. I could see it, you know, serving as a main hub for the Arts and Crafts Festival down the road. So those are types of things we're planning for. More of a tactical urbanism approach, you know, fun, vibrant materials in this scheme, a little more whimsical in nature in some of the vertical elements, using paint instead of pavers. And so this is what that looks like. This scheme locates the restroom and transit hub, kind of a consolidated structure into the west side, and then also addresses some of those parking concerns in this scheme. And so that was the vision for that one, with kind of paint on the ground as opposed to the pavers and the string lights across the street. And then here's kind of a hybrid approach with more of like a canvas canopy over the top of the alley. And then that's kind of what that one was going to look like. So these were the takeaways. We did go through this process of, you know, kind of connecting the dots. Green, people put green on things that they really liked and pink on things that they didn't like and orange on stuff that they sort of liked. And that was a really helpful process for us, just being able to take away that from our meetings. They didn't like the lack of loading space on some of the schemes. The restroom, Jack, as you said, just the proximity to the visitor center and being in that eastern area of the property, the lack of delivery space and the organization of the dumpsters in some of those schemes. They did love the transit hub near Church Street, restroom on the west end of the project as well, string lights, pavers, everybody really liked the idea of the pavers, bike share on the west end, good wayfinding, colorful shaded canopies particularly on the alleys that connect to downtown from, to Fairhope Avenue from the alley. And they really like to improve circulation and one-way travel down the alley where it's currently two-way. What we're creating is essentially a Wooner or Von Erf, which is a living, more pedestrian-oriented street. It's several cities, larger cities are doing this in Boston and Washington DC, and it's really just creating a vibrant shared space. These are examples of those. And this is, you know, just looking at a little more detailed level, this is the kind of the cross-section that we were talking about, Jack, earlier, is a 12-foot drivable lane, which is basically an interstate lane, one-way, with the parking garage on the right side of this drawing, and then having an overflow, spillover space if somebody needed to pull over, that would be on the right side of this. And so it'd be a paver swell that still functions for some of that stormwater that's coming off the roadway, but if a truck needed to pull over, you could accommodate that. Then incorporating lighting, kind of a gateway element. And so this was the final scheme that we ended up with. Transit hub on the west end of the project, pavement areas increased from some of the other schemes. Parking within the city right away is limited, it's more about loading space, bike share on the west end, trash configuration is improved. We have, can't really see it on this drawing, but we have these dumpster hubs on either end of the parking garage which will consolidate the trash cans. If you're familiar with where our office is, there's one right in front of my office that has a kind of a wall enclosure with a gate which screens off all the dumpsters in there and keeps them, you know, hidden in the urban landscape. So it works really well. And so this is the vision looking from Church Street back at the transit hub. This was an earlier concept that the hardware store was working towards with a kind of a rooftop deck overlooking the space. I think some things are changing with that based on historic requirements, but their goal is to still make that building interface with the alley because of what we're doing and we're really excited about that. And then we're working towards, you see the gateway element incorporated at the edge of the parking garage, which would help, you know, draw people in and again, recirculate back through downtown. And then the idea of incorporating a restroom facility into this west end is again, what a lot of people were wanting. Then this is the view of the plaza from the, on the east end, how artwork could be incorporated into that tower element along the parking garage there. And for that matter, art can be incorporated into this entire project, which we do believe and since it's named Arts Alley, you know, that's an exciting thing. Just making this an improved view from the Hampton Inn, I think would be an asset there as well as the surrounding businesses. That is the name. We did go through a naming process. Those are some things that we had to, or working through coordination with others on, stakeholders. These are the materials that we're talking about. Basically, anywhere there's pedestrian zones going with the Fairhope red brick pavers and then in the drivable surfaces, those would be permeable, heavy-duty pavers that allow water to filter through the joints. The pavers themselves aren't permeable, but the joints are, and that will help tremendously with the amount of stormwater that's running through that urban area. The gateway element, this is just a precedent for what we're looking to create on that west end. Again, just to have a branding component, a place where people can take pictures and really start that process of funneling people back into the downtown. Bike shares is another thing we've been talking about. Restrooms, Richard will probably talk about this in a little bit, just figuring out how to incorporate that in a way that flows with the current design and make it a smaller footprint but still function well for all the users there. Types of landscape, string lights, I don't want to get too bogged down, this is a view of that and, you know, just making sure that we can accommodate the 18-wheeler traffic back up through the, that was a big deal for a lot of the merchants, just making sure we could accommodate that. So that shows that that can be done. Also, over there by Master Joe's, working with those building owners to create a more subtle gateway on Section Street. That was an idea that I had because we were trying to figure out how to make, you know, people know that parking is here. Master Joe's has talked about allowing us to put a mural on his wall there. I'm sure artists could do a much better job than what I did with my little tie-dyed view of it, but, you know, it could be a way to have a literal functional aspect to a piece of art that is serving also as a mural. We've been working for a few months on some wayfinding designs for the city and incorporating the final designs into this project is one thing we're going to be doing. These are some of the furnishings that we've, that we're looking at for the project. That was the dumpster enclosure. You can't really see it on the screen, but I'll let Richard touch on the budget and the cost of where we are today.
I told Christian I would handle the hard part of this. Just kind of give you an update. As you know, this is a 5307 funded project. I will tell you, I have been impressed at how quickly we're getting reimbursed on our grant. As soon as we send the council check, we get payment usually within about 10 days back to us. So where we are at after all the stakeholder involvement, we're at what we call 60% plan sets, meaning that we've got a, we've been able to handle the survey and the layout, the geometrics, the drainage and utilities and all of that. Of course, there's a lot of final details to take place and on the back of this is the budget and I'll go through that. But we did submit this through ALDOT and FTA and we asked some questions that we're waiting for a response on. One is, is that we did not anticipate bathrooms, but that was almost a universal request of our stakeholders and everybody's been involved in this project. One, we've asked the question if, would they be willing to allow the hub incorporate public bathrooms and the grant cover that 80% cost of that? Or if not, could it be an additive alternative that we could bid with the project and let you as the council decide whether that is a value to do that? The other thing is, is right now we have a very conservative estimate of probable cost based upon the design as you see it right now, and it's about $284,000 above the preliminary budget that the grant was based on that was reviewed and approved in August of 2017. And we have asked them to comment on whether they would be willing through the MPO to increase our funding, to bring it up to the actual cost or before we go through any limiting scope of work or doing any value engineering on that. And finally, we've asked them to review the plans in the state that they are to make sure that everything proposed is, would be covered by the grant. And as you can see, the details of that budget, and I don't want to scare you too bad, but we put a great big hairy number in for a placeholder on the restroom. This number, it represents a prefab unit that self-clean, self-locks and unlocks. It is as expensive as you can be. But to put in perspective, we built a pretty nice restroom at North Beach and that's a big restroom, much bigger than this, and it was $93,000 being built in place. So we know that there's opportunities for cost savings there, but one of the sensitivities of this project is trying to keep that footprint as small as possible on any structures down there. One thing that was originally assumed in the application of the grant, all of the drainage in the alley is surface drainage, it just flows down. And we found out from our stakeholders that there's repeated flooding on the back of the buildings when we get real heavy rainfalls. So we made a pretty quick determination that we needed to pick up the drainage off the parking deck, off part of the Hampton Inn, part of BB&amp;T Bank, put it underground and tie it into the system on Church Street. And as you can see there, that's $42,000 that's in there for the cost of piping that underground. Now, the remaining surface runoff, we're going to handle through the LIDs and the swell and landscaping and the runoff there. But that was something that was not originally anticipated. I don't think that the grant agency is having a problem increasing the grant to cover the necessary instructions for it. And as you can see, we have some pretty good number there for lighting, but we want to be very, very conservative. But we want to let you know where we are. You know, ultimately, we're going to hear back from the state and FTA and they're going to say yea or nay to these following things and we'll have to keep you informed there. But as soon as we have guidance back from them, we'll start finalizing the details of this plan. And, you know, the biggest challenge that we have is that we've promised the stakeholders that we would be sensitive to their business cycles and to events within the city. So kind of trying to schedule that project so it has the least amount of disruptions going to be important to us. And I will note, there's about $90-something thousand of just contingency in this price here too, of unknown things that we would rather plan for and not need it than to have not planned for and needed it. But that's the status of the project. I will tell you, it's been a deliberative process. I am really happy with the amount of input we received from our business owners that are connected to this alley. As you saw from one slide, we have about three folks that we're still working out issues with. We've had a good meeting with BB&amp;T Bank, we're asking for a follow-up meeting. And we've got to work with the property owner on the northwest corner because there's some apparent asphalt and that's really the ideal location for the wayfinding signage and hopefully we can work out a landscaping agreement on that and accommodate them as well. But really, at this point in time, we're looking for input from you. And if you see something you really like, tell us about it. If you saw something that you really didn't like, tell us about it because we're still at that point in the process where we want everybody's input.
So I have a question about the businesses there. You said that they've been real amenable to this and you don't see any pitfalls. I mean, that's pretty detailed plans. Are we getting, you know, are we having to work on a couple or is it going to look like this? Or are we still working on a couple and this really may not look like that behind certain businesses? And you don't have to give me specific names of businesses.
You know, the biggest challenge is, is we can work on property that's under lease with the parking authority, okay? Beyond that, that is outside the scope of this funding. So some of the, some of the things are inspirational, but hopefully those businesses will join in and do a little remodeling. I know there's already one gentleman who's already said he's got plans to remodel the back of his. And then of course, Mrs. Bryant is the architect of record for the old hardware store and she has been very up to date on what we're doing and is trying to coordinate her design to take advantage of and enhance their facade on the alley side of that. I will tell you, BB&amp;T is one of our biggest challenges.
That's what I was thinking, a lot of cars in the park there.
We met, and here's the challenge, about 40% of all their cars is actually in the alley project limits, meaning that their parking depths are not deep enough to park a car there. But we don't want to do something that negatively affects them, so we're trying to work with them. One of the things that we've already asked permission for is we want to pick up their downspouts and put in the underground system because that's another source of runoff that's causing problems, was coming off the roof of the bank. I think we had a positive meeting with them. Once they saw what we were doing, they understood much better and we're supposed to have a follow-up meeting with their security people because that was one of the issues is security, meaning that there are employees that need to have access to their vehicle or whatever, maybe they're transporting things that are sensitive or whatever. But really, the number of final things that we have to address have, even if we just have to just stay on our side of the line and do that, I think we can deliver this project pretty well as it's considered with those accommodations.
So we can stay on our side of the line back behind BB&amp;T and accomplish pretty much of what we want to do.
Yes, sir.
So there are a lot of those cars parking on our side of the line. I mean, it's not too much to ask from the park, you know, those that aren't having security concerns in the parking garage, which is right there.
And...
So the, just to give you an idea, Jack, the, these are the parking areas right here. They're basically halfway on their property and half on the, like it's a parking building.
And one of the things is that the parking authority is not opposed to it, but even if we had to go designate five places with a sign in, pardon me, for BB&amp;T bank employees only or whatever, we're going to try to accomplish. And it would be better for everybody to get as many people parking in the parking deck as possible. That's part of, one of the goals of making this a more inviting area as a project.
Or just have the public section of the BB&amp;T parking for their customers. Because I mean, the public parking park should still remain public, I think. If they have extra room, that'd be good.
So we're going to work through that and those are just, you know, they're really kind of small details and I think there's going to be a compromise found that everybody will be happy with and the lines of communication are open. be happy with, and the lines of communication are open, so we're excited about that.
Would you try to coordinate deliveries at a certain time of day just to keep the big trucks from going through there?
You know, one of the things that we did not realize was that how much of a working alley it was. And until, you know, it was funny, we came out of the meeting, and I think there was two tractor trailers parked backed up into the alley, so we realized that. So you know kinda how the beauty about the circulation is that if you look at the north entrance on Church, whether it's a transit bus or a tourist bus coming in to drop folks off or a tractor truck, they can come in and make the loop, and then the tractor can line up and back up the alley to as far as they need to service their customers. So that's one of the things, is we've kept circulation. And we've been told some of the smaller tractors actually come in off of Section Street, so the turning movements have all been measured. We're not reducing the travel way, meaning the same amount of travel space is gonna be in this proposal as there is today. The biggest thing is, is that the movement on the alley is from east to west, no longer trying to do two ways because really, it's not practical, especially if there's a big truck for two vehicles to move. And so one of the signage hints is if the alley is blocked, exit through the parking deck.
Maybe we could fix that now, tomorrow.
Yeah. But that was the biggest thing, the business owners just, you know, and probably most deliveries are between eight AM and eleven probably at the latest, so, you know, so the, and that's just the nature of the business, and we gotta make sure those customers, those businesses can have their services.
So are you, so, and council, I'll jump right in and ask questions, but, so you're wanting a feedback, you know, kinda, anything else would you like to see included or taken out? Or are you looking for a blessing? Basically, we're committing to about two-hundred-and-thirteen to two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, that's with the contingencies and that's with the restroom, if they were to pay eighty percent of the restrooms?
Right now, yes. If we got lucky on the restrooms, you know, remember, our match is twenty percent. So let's say we take the restrooms out based upon right now, we have a placeholder in the budget of a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. So if, let's say it opened at eight-twenty, you know, then all of a sudden, that one-twenty goes to one-sixty-two or whatever it is. So I think regardless, the bathrooms will be an additive augment for either scenario so that at least we can decide, you know, that yes, we wanna do the bathrooms, and no, we're planning for them, but they can come at a later date. So really, we're looking just for any input you wanna give. You know, we'll never know the actual price till we open bids.
It's gonna be whatever we estimate or hire.
Whatever numbers in the budget are.
That unfortunately has been the trend lately, Council President.
But if there's anything like, you know, just if there's anything that you'd like to see more of or less of, or, you know, payers are obviously a big-ticket item, they're a big part of the project, but everybody, that was the one thing that kept getting the green dots when we went through that exercise.
I like it all. I'll just tell you, I like it all. I mean, I like that, you know, especially if we get it for twenty cents on the dollar, I like it all. It's a wonderful plan. I like the, I like the string lights a lot, but then you had that one fixture up there with the shaded lamps along the parking garage with street lamps on the other side, and that's kinda a key with Fairhope as well, both of those. I don't know, you guys change that, too. String lights may be a fad, they may be gone.
Yeah, we're gonna put some poles up that, you know, could accommodate a fixture on it as well, so, you know, that can be added easily, yeah, or changed, yeah. The string lights were one of the things that everybody on the steering committee really liked.
I like it all.
Yeah, just to cast that light, make it not feel so, you know, dark, like a dark alley.
It might.
Yeah, exactly.
And the good news is, is that when I sent my memo asking the state to review this, they actually came in and visited the site while both him and I were on vacation, so that means they're responding to our request, and hopefully we're gonna get some thumbs up from them that they're good with where we are and we can move forward, and...
And perhaps an MPA, if they're really excited about it.
Yeah, they're involved in it, and of course, Mr. Burrell, you know that we have an MPO meeting in Ju- July, so hopefully if there's a consideration of an increased funding, that will be dealt with at that meeting, so. Thank you for your time. This has been, I know we've talked about this project for a very long time.
What about the canopies, you know, in the wind? What's the...
There are no canopies in the project right now. Really, these alleys that go from our property boundary is from the, from this point up to the north. Anything in here is like a co-share between these two property owners, but one of the committee's requests is that we show what those could look like if somebody did decide to do it on their private land, just actually make those access points up. So we currently don't have any shade structure.
And I got, you know, I think there's maybe some interest from support of the chamber and possibly the single tax maybe to help work on those areas that are outside of the scope of what we can spend the money on that help continue this, and, 'cause everybody loved the shade structures. They were pretty cool, so.
Looks good.
East to west, one way, there's not a problem. The only reason I'm thinking, I don't really care one way or the other. I hate to get way into this and all of a sudden forty people show up, they will know we need to go west to east.
I mean, I think that's the natural traffic flow, I mean, we've got...
Downhill?
It's going downhill.
Yeah, I just want, don't wanna get, you know...
Now, we will, we will...
We've had some projects, we've got all the way through this, and all of a sudden everyone wanna change the whole thing.
The way, the way the alley does work right now is, I've been back there several times, when these guys are making deliveries, is they'll pull up on Church Street and then back down the alley. Between eight and ten AM, I don't really see that as a major issue. What we're gonna do on this end is, like Richard said, put a sign right at this entrance that says if alley is blocked, exit through the parking garage and have another intermittent sign in the parking garage that says take a right to exit.
A lot of people don't realize.
They don't know this, yeah. And so it's an easy, you know, bypass, if you pull up and see a tractor trailer right there, you just go through the parking garage if you're trying to get back that way, but...
And we don't get any pushback on that one. I've never had any pushback on that one.
Well, this is kinda how it's really set up anyways. I mean, people just don't always follow it, but it's a one-way coming off a section into the alley.
It is.
And this is exactly how it's supposed to flow. People sometimes come in...
But to me, this is the right way to do it. I'm just thinking, outside the box, and to get all this...
Yeah, all the people that back up through this road have been in favor of that circulation path, so those are the ones that I would be most concerned about being objectives.
Well, one last question is, how long will this take once we undertake it, and any estimate of the week?
We are dealing with the federal government here, so I'll qualify as that. I think that if we get some feedback before the MPO meeting, and they know that's one of the, kinda the deadlines we're looking for, I think, what Christian, really, we would probably need about thirty days to clean up the plans and start putting together an actual bid package. The biggest thing is kinda looking at construction time and everything else, and we really haven't had a lot of in-depth conversation, but we're, what, a hundred-and-eighty day project is what we're thinking?
Yeah, I don't think so.
So that's a six-month. It's, you know, one of the things that we did discuss with the stakeholders is that the contractor would be responsible at the end of each day's activity, that it has to be open and durable, whether it's on crush aggregate or whatever. So it would, you know, the alley's gotta stay in service through construction, which is gonna be a challenge, and there may be some certain portions that are closed off, but overall, but those are things that...
Bring your work gloves, guys, we'll lay them down.
Yeah, there you go.
Lay them on one day.
Do the work all at night.
There you go. The string lights up, let's roll.
So realistically, I told Christian that if we could, you know, looking at the schedule, if we could be in a position where this project actually was, started construction immediately following Arts and Crafts Festival, and I know that seems like a long time away, but in the world of what we could get through, that gives us the biggest window of the fewest amount of city events that would negatively affect it with this area being under construction. So that's, and, you know, I know that seems like a world away, but that in reality, those next six months will go by like that, so that's kinda what I was thinking. That would be the perfect window is to start construction immediately, you know, have that contractor mobilize Monday following Arts and Crafts, and six months later, we're done before we have light in the trees.
Yeah, it would be horrible to get it, you know, into the Christmas when there's a lot of traffic, so I think that would be ideal.
If y'all have any other, you know, if you think about it tonight, and you say, oh, I'd really love to see this, or, you know, we're still in that realm of possibility where we can interject things in the plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, committee updates. Councilman Conyers?
Actually, I don't have any committee updates, other than to say, we're working on something in several committees I serve on. Hopefully, we'll have more information and update by next council meeting.
Councilman Brown?
No updates.
Councilman Moon?
No updates.
I don't have any updates. Richard?
Nothing major. I did collect a mayor note. We apparently received a delivery of a city fairhoop historic marker, and apparently we received it right in the middle of the oil spill crisis in two thousand and ten, and it got put in the warehouse, and our purchasing manager has been on a mission to clean the warehouse. And a volunteer took the sign and cleaned it all up and back to us, and we need to put it somewhere. It is just the history of, you know, the traditional historic marker, and I suggest to mayor that the first thing that I thought was somewhere appropriate there between the visitor's center and the museum, 'cause that's kinda the first point that people start their tour of Fairhope. But if you have any input, it's, you know, it's a traditional historic marker, the cash plaque that has the emblem and the city of Fairhope and the blue background and the gold letters, but that was an unexpected treasure that was found in the warehouse when we got to cleaning, so.
I think, I had to tie in nicely with our one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary, and we're gonna be kicking that off next month, and it'll be November fifteenth, so...
Okay. All right. Ms. Blaisen?
We are currently in budget...
Let me get y'all to come up here so we can get you on the mic.
I'm just saying, we're doing budget prep. Let's all have it.
They said all this in the director roundtable.
Ms. Creach?
Just been busy.
Mr. Smith?
I'll just come to my company. Yeah. Good afternoon, council. The Green Road corridor overlay will present the revisions to the document, to the Planning Commission, Monday night, week from today. We won't ask the Planning Commission to act upon it. That won't occur till the August meeting, but we definitely have numerous revisions. We'll present that to Planning Commission Monday, and thank you to everyone who has provided staff with feedback.
Any surprises?
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir. Generally, it's been pretty standard comments. I think what's good is that citizens and other stakeholders are now really looking at the zoning ordinance. So actually, in this process, we've answered some routine questions along the way as well. So that's been very positive, and we're thankful for that as well. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Peterson?
It's nice to have forty minutes to get to talk to y'all before the council meeting starts. I know y'all are excited about that. I don't know if y'all have heard from any of your constituents in Rock Creek. We've had a, and I've sent, Jack, I think, copied on some of the emergency permitting things that we've done with Aldot, but we lost the twelve-inch water main that feeds the booster station there, and we're working with Aldot to get, they're gonna wind up extending the culvert coming out of South Drive about forty feet to the north so that we can have more security where our facilities are. You know, the site, when you drive by, you'd never know that there was anything wrong out there. It's just over time, there's been some erosion issues due to the flume system that was put in has continued to fall, and, you know, it's hard to guess how far the elevation drops between the drive at South Drive and where the bottom of that ravine is, probably a hundred feet away. It's probably a good thirty feet of fall. And so you have a lot of energy in that water, and they're gonna come back. Thornton Construction is their contractor for emergency-type repairs, and they're gonna come in and extend that culvert and then put a rip-rap flume to the bottom of that and try to do a better job of protecting that wash, but the customers in Rock Creek are gonna be a little bit short on water pressure. We've talked to them about, or at least we've sent email correspondence, asked them to be aware of the situation, if they can turn off the irrigation systems, you know, especially during peak flows, morning and evening, so that people can have advantage of better water pressure, but that's where we are with that. We'll meet the contractor out there in the morning and hopefully have an idea about what our schedule will be to be able to get back in and put the water main back, so we hope that will be done sooner, and we hope it'll be done by the end of the week, but we'll keep everybody posted on that. Michael Allison, he's not here with us today, but he had talked to y'all about the substation site behind the ABC store, in that property where the retention pond is. And he, and I think you mentioned something about notifying the people, so we've sent out, you know, hundreds of letters to all the adjacent property owners. We've gotten a little bit of feedback, we've talked to all of them. We're feeling pretty good that the people recognize the value of the substation there, they recognize the need to have some redundant circuitry in this particular site that we wouldn't be able to do with the site under the tank at Fairhope Avenue. And so, and we've gotten a quote from the electrical engineer to design the substation there. I just want, I feel like we can take advantage of this opportunity to dress up the retention pond out there. I think we can put some, you know, landscaping around it, and I think we can do some aeration work out there, and I think we can improve the quality of the water that leaves that site.
We're gonna have to deepen it. Aren't we taking up some of that retention area if we were to put it there? Are we gonna have to deepen the existing?
We're looking to actually raise the water level a little bit. We're looking to add some additional constrictions in the water levels where the flow leaves that site, and Richard knows more about this than I do, he's seen some of the design calculations, but we hope that in the long run, we'll have a better set of retention area out there, and we'll...
Better than holding more capacity?
Hold more capacity than what it does now.
I hope it would be staged, too.
Right.
So that, you know, as it fills up, it's meandering outwatering, you don't have a proverbial dam break when it gets to the level that it overflows, 'cause then it's just water in, water out.
That's our goal, is to make it work better for extreme rain events.
Now, does the county own that, or do we own that?
The county divvied that to us.
Okay, so it's ours.
Right. And we're working with Eric Cortina's on the actual elevation requirements because there is a floodway designation in there. But we think, you know, right now, we think everything, we've got a few more, you know, eyes to dot and t's to cross, but we feel pretty good about it. I'm just wanting to make sure everything's okay to move forward from y'all's perspective with that. We'll keep moving forward. Another project we're working on with the one-eighty-one widen, we, and the Planning Commission looked at and approved, Kane Rowbirds has property just south of Hollerbrook, and just south of that is a medical, a family medical practice center. We're trying to provide sewer. I was trying, I was hoping to get easements along the west right-of-way from the property owners. We ran into a little bit of a glitch with one of the property owners where they didn't wanna give us an easement, and because that right-of-way's under construction, there are limits to what you can do with the contractor of record being active in that particular right-of-way, and putting a gravity sewer in from what would be Mosley Road up would be a little bit of a burden on everybody, including us, if we couldn't get the easement. So I've asked the contractor, we've submitted a permit to Aldot to extend from Hollerbrook, the north side of Hollerbrook's entrance, and we'll extend the six-inch sewer main that they're relocating as part of the highway project that ends at the north edge of the pavement for Hollerbrook. We'll extend it south about four-hundred-and-seventy-five feet, and we'll use the unit prices that were in the contract for the six-inch force main that they're laying for us now, and I haven't got the full numbers, and I hate to quote any numbers because I know that can become a problem, but... know that can become a problem, but, uh, the, the per-foot price is, is over thirteen, thirteen seventy-five a foot. Now, there are some fittings that go with that, and there's gonna be something to get under the Holla Brook. And now, our plans that, that I looked at, uh, from the original development of Holla Brook showed that the forest main would be extended under that entrance road and capped off and bowed off for future extensions. Well, when we go out and investigated, it, it didn't turn out that way. It turned out that it went up, uh, on the north side of Holla Brook and turned north, and, and then there's nothing under the road, which, uh, leads me to another issue about connectivity with subdivision work. I mean, we, even if we have to pay to get, uh, sewer to the edge of the property line as an extension of a right-of-way between lots, we, we have, the, the trailer park on the corner of Thirteen and Morphe is an example of this, that they're having a failed septic tank situation, and Eddington Place has sewer that's stubbed out on each of the right-of-ways that connects to that adjacent property. Well, the problem is, the utility stopped at the last, the last lot line before it got to the edge of the right-of-way of the property line. And so, now, we're gonna have to extend a sewer line across somebody's front yard to be able to get access to the property to the west of the Eddington Place. And, and it's, it's an inconvenience, and I'm working with the Planning Commission and Bufer, too, to look at the definition of connectivity as being something that allows us to have not only just a road put there, I mean, road, i- it's nice to have vehicular connectivity, but we also have connectivity for utilities, we have connectivity for drainage, we have connectivity for pedestrian access. And so, I, I just wanna kinda give y'all a heads up as to what we're trying to accomplish from that perspective. But the one-eighty-one forest main project, I mean, we've, Kane Rowbirds has, I think he's got three units he's building there, and, and the medical practice is getting off of the septic tank so they can in, increase the, the building behind that. And they both asked for sewer, and that's just what we're gonna try to do, serve it. Now, I don't know what the final cost will be. It may be, uh, at thirteen seventy-five a foot, you know, it's gonna be somewhere in the ten-thousand-dollar range perhaps. With fittings, it may be more than that if there's a bore required under Holla Brook, and I'm not sure exactly how that'll go yet. But I'm, I'm hopeful that y'all are okay with getting that done. And then the last thing is, on the side stream storage, um, we've got the geotechnical work done, and I've got an agreement that I have not looked at yet from RSA to, to lead us that property. And, and I'm thinking at this point, the best thing may be for me to try to get a design-build type proposal together. And, and I say that because we, we would like to be able to put in the tanks, and then we'd like to be able to retrofit, you know, the pump equipment and the aeration equipment and things we're gonna need, but, I mean, we just don't have time. We just, we, we are busy reacting to issues such as the Rock Creek thing. We had a water main break on thirty-two, and, and plus, we're trying to run new services, and the more we react to these other issues that come up, you know, and, and they come up pretty regular. And we also have new services to run on, I mean, so we're getting behind on some of the work we need to be getting accomplished for the customers now, and, and to, to try to put us, you know, try to put more on our plate, I think at this point in time is not the best way to go. But I'd like to put out a design-build type proposal, and, and we can get some design considerations from outside consultants and, and see if there's some economy of scale and some features we can include or take out, or do things like that to where we can have a, you know, a better understanding maybe with a, an operation and maintenance plan involved in it so that there's no misguidance as to what we're gonna be able to accomplish and how we're gonna be able to do it. And so, that's what I propose.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that side store. You made the proposal, I guess it was a couple of months ago.
Right.
You know, it seemed like there were several options. One was basically a, a storage tank, if you will, and then one was a, kind of a mini treatment plant, correct?
Well, the, the, the side stream storage concept is that, and there's two ways to do that. The, the first phase of that would be to just to let it be dormant until you have rain events, and then you would just bypass sewer into that until you could pump it into the plant at a, at a given rate.
Right.
And, and my thinking about that is, well, we also have daily peaks, and we also have emergencies that we deal with in certain sectors of the collection system. And it would be nice to be able to utilize those things for peak shaving during the day, and, and, and the sewer that, that gets to the plant from quite a ways away, County Road One, you know, the, the far side of, of, uh, one-eighty-one, uh, east of one-eighty-one out, out Fairhope Avenue. I mean, by the time some of that sewer gets to the plant, it's, it's fairly septic, and, and if you remember, one of the purposes of upgrading the plant, not hydraulic capacity, but treatment capacity, was because of the BOD load that has developed within that septic sewer before it gets to the plant. And so, if we can hold back that sewer and, and do some re-aeration work before it gets to the plant, that's where I'm thinking, that we may be able to gain some capacity at the plant for treatment capacity and hydraulic capacity, and, uh, and that's part of what, the definition of how much re-aeration is too much re-aeration, I've, I've researched a little bit, but I've not been able to come up with a, with a decent, you know, figure on exactly what we would want to accomplish in that. But, but the, the, you know, being able to capture that wastewater load before it gets to the plant and, and freshen it up, if you will, and at the same time, taking some of the older concerns out of it, uh, you know, having some redundant storage capability for rain events or for, you know, if we have a lift station problem, I mean, we, we may have to shut a forest main off, and, and we may need to back it up somewhere, and that would be the logical place to do that. So, the, those are the things I'd like to accomplish and not just treating it as a side stream storage for extreme rain events, 'cause, you know, we've had a drought here the last thirty-four months, basically, we had a, one or two pretty good rain events, but, you know, we've had some pretty dry weather, too, and, you know, we wouldn't be taking advantage of it as well if we just used it strictly for that. I think if you're gonna spend the money on that, you need to try to make the most of it, and so that's what we'd like to try to do.
Give me an idea again, what are one of those, uh, side stream sewage tanks called? How many gallons we talked about?
Uh, the, the smaller ones we're looking at are about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons, the, the bigger ones are about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons.
Ten percent of what we want.
And so, it's, uh, well, it's a significant amount, and, and, you know, when, when the, the bigger rain events of a tropical storm or, or, it won't be enough for that. I mean, I can just tell you, we, we've had three-and-a-half million gallons in, in Foley, and, uh, the April thirtieth rain event, it was full. You know, there's been other events that would, I mean, 'cause every rain event is, is unique in that, you know, you, you either have saturated conditions before the heaviest rain occurs, and at that point in time, everything's running off like it's on concrete. Or you have a real quick rain event, and everything runs off real quick, and you, and you really don't have time for the ground to absorb it, and for whatever infiltration issues you have or inflow issues, you have to really, uh, become saturated to the point where you're dealing with real problems with sewer other than the flow to the plant. And if we can back off some of the areas before it gets to that, the Doghouse Lift Station or the North Section Lift Station or the South Section Lift, if we can back some off before, those stations can handle everything local that, that's involved in, you know, most of the older systems in town anyway, so you're gonna get most of your flow from there. But, uh, then, then we can back it up and, and let that flow get through the plant, then we can reinforce it with normal flow coming from these side streams or, and we don't have to empty them right away, and we, we can, we can wait twelve hours to, to start to drain them out systematically and, and, uh, at a pace where the plant will never see the difference in, you know, treatment quality. Right now, you get too much flow to the plant, and it, and it does, uh, you, you have to manage your, your biological activity a little bit better than, you know, the, I mean, you have to pay attention to it, and, and it can be difficult with the higher flows for suspended, for sustained amount of time.
College.
So, that's, that's what I've got.
Thank you, Richard. There's only twenty minutes.
Do we still have some time?
You're right.
Thank you.
Eric?
No, it's just, we just got on.
Tom?
It's all good.
Jay?
You heard.
Okay.
Eric?
Nothing at all.
Chief?
Uh, just a couple things, we're ready for the fourth for next week, and, uh, we're getting a visit by ISO for an inspection tomorrow morning, so we're gonna be good on that. Just a quick note.
Okay. I'm assuming Mike has uncovered. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Council, y'all have anything else? Y'all wanna bring forth, forth, look to the agenda meeting real quick? Should go pretty quick. Uh, you guys stop me if you, if you want to have someone explain, um, five, six, seven. Let me ask you this. Mr. Johnson, on this beat, we have questions. Would that be you going five and six?
Uh, number five is Peterson, number six is Johnson.
Okay. Okay. Number seven, I don't think there are any questions about that. Number eight, nine, anybody have any questions about the uniforms? Okay, ten. Eleven, twelve, y'all stop me. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, uh, I wanna make a comment that all the city employees need to thank Lisa Hanks for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
And we read that, and she read it by the mayor, she said she had no problem with it, so we don't have a problem with it. Anyway, I did wanna give a little kudos for looking out after everybody. Um, number sixteen, I'm just gonna tell everybody in the crowd, I, I, I do not look for a lot of action to take place on that tonight. Um, we'll probably, we will discuss it, but, um, my guess is, is that we're not going to vote on that. Uh, item seventeen has been pulled at the request of the mayor. Um, item eighteen, um, I guess we will, you can ask the mayor questions about eighteen or nineteen if you have to. Twenty, can handle that, or the mayor can.
They have those small, small board numbers here, so if you want regular ones, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah, um, and twenty-one, so we can ask that question. So, on the, um, I'll ask the personnel board that question. So, on eighteen in particular, uh, these grades and these jobs descriptions, that you, the, um, personnel board has blessed them, have you made a, you'd make no recommendation as to where or not to fill them, is that correct?
When we, when we prepare, what we kind of do is we look at, uh, the concrete, other job descriptions and pay some of the missed hours, how do they prepare with the internal equity for the jobs they seek? So, we look at that, and you said, these are great, and whether y'all approve them or not, but in terms of the personnel board, we said that the mayor has gone through every step that she needs to do for us to say, these job descriptions, praise and pay ranges for, uh, the cross people, that's in the job. And I sent y'all to the mayor and to all of y'all that know exactly what we have considered and what we recognize.
Okay. Y'all have any questions for the personnel board?
Number nineteen.
Yeah, and nineteen is not in the script. Let me go back to that tab. I was looking for specifically if there was a, if there's just a change in the, in the pay range, I believe, maybe there's, is there a change in the pay rate?
It's, it's the title.
It's just the title?
Why can't it just be a title change?
It was just something that didn't happen during the budget process for some reason. This was several years ago.
Okay. Uh, on that, okay, so note, council, that that, as it's written, is contingent upon that position of community development supervisor, period twenty-three, because it says, reports to community development supervisor, which doesn't exist at this moment.
Well, that's the agenda item before that.
That's what I said, it's contingent upon that. Y'all have any questions about that?
I've emailed y'all to, to let you know that there is an overlap in pay for the supervisor and the director, and, um, I promoted from within, you know, at a salary that regardless of what happens, if you approve it, we'll change the name and hire in another person as a coordinator, but if you don't approve it, the promotion's already happened. It doesn't affect, it's just a title, the, the salaries remain the same.
Okay. Council, y'all have anything else? I wanna adjourn the meeting, and that's all, I'll be back there in about fifteen minutes.